Welcome one, welcome all. Councilmember Rouse is running a few minutes behind with some car difficulties, but we'll be here. But once again, thank you all for being here and thank you kind people in the gallery for coming. Appreciate it.
Of the Convention and Visitors Bureau will come and brief council on two spring/summer festival opportunities that we've received to hear your thoughts and feedback. And this item will be for you all to consider today in your voting meeting as well.
Hey, welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Duhany, Mr. Ingram. I'm here today to provide a brief on two new proposals received by the city for oceanfront festival activations. Festival one was submitted by Odyssey Virginia as a potential programming for the dates that were previously held by Something in the Water, historically known as College Beach Week in Virginia Beach. The event will feature popular music like pop, R&B, rap, and contemporary. As you may recall, Something in the Water expressed interest in new dates for 2024. Staff has been working with production team and we're looking forward to an announcement in the future. Festival two was submitted by I Am Going Integrated Marketing Group for a new June event featuring reggae. Odyssey Virginia, as you will recall, approached the city to host an event in October of this year. Due to the compact timeframe in the city's public safety departments, had concerns about planning, the event did not take place. This is a new concept and proposal from the Odyssey team. To refresh your memory, Odyssey Virginia owns four radio stations locally, reaches 1.2 million listeners each week, and Odyssey was the promoter of the Oceanfront Concert Series during 2022 East Coast Surfing Championship. Odyssey is proposing April 26 through 28 for a new music festival. Odyssey is also promoting activating the 17th and 24th Street Parks utilizing partnerships with local community groups. Friday and Saturday will feature national acts on the sand, and Sunday would be a Battle of the Bands, and they have several other ideas to incorporate local talent, college bands, and other activations. The stage location will be at 31st Street on the beach, adjacent to King Neptune, facing south. Odyssey will be responsible for partnering with the community, groups, artists, and food The activations at 17th and 24th Street Parks will include partnerships with local community groups, nonprofits, and local creatives. These partnerships and engagements will be coordinated by the Odyssey team. Odyssey is seeking the same sponsorship as they previously requested in October, including $750,000 cash sponsorship and in-kind city services. City services estimates will be finalized at the completion of the permit process. Odyssey will provide $750,000 in dedicated media funds for use by the city of Virginia Beach and traditional Virginia Beach tourism marketing markets as identified by the city and expended during the 2024 calendar year. Odyssey will also provide a $1.5 million promotional marketing campaign for the event on Odyssey platforms throughout the mid-Atlantic and traditional Virginia Beach tourism markets. The second proposal was submitted by Integrated Marketing Group, or I Am Going as they're known. I Am Going is the producer of our beach events, the city's entertainment contractor. This proposal is being submitted by Ken McDonald and I Am Going, and this proposal is separate from the city's entertainment contract with beach events. I Am Going has more than 30 years' experience in event creation, and they're interested in curating a reggae festival in Virginia Beach to bring a unique cultural experience attracting the local community and guests from out of market. The proposed dates are May 31 through June 2, but we may need to be flexible based on talent. I Am Going is proposing free live entertainment in 17th, 21st, 24th, and 31st Street Parks on Friday, May 31, and on Saturday and Sunday, I Am Going is proposing a beach stage and festival programming from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The festival footprint will be located between 2nd and 6th Streets at the oceanfront. The date pattern setup would begin on May 23, and teardown would be complete on June 5, three days post-event. The event would include general admission and VIP ticket offerings, and I Am Going would be responsible for sponsorship, vendors, and other programming. I Am Going is estimating an investment of $3 million on producing the event. They're also estimating $15,000 in attendance daily, with an estimated 67% of those guests out of market. They also estimate that 65% of the non-resident attendees will stay in local hotels with an average party size of 2.5 people. The Virginia Beach Reggae Festival has the potential to join an esteemed group of successful reggae genre events throughout the country. You can see names and locations listed on this slide. I Am Going is seeking $300,000 in cash sponsorship to be applied to an estimated $3 million in production costs. In addition, I Am Going is requesting tax rebates within the festival footprint, including admissions tax, meals tax, and the city's portion of sales tax, up to $450,000. They're also requesting in-kind city services, which will be finalized upon completion of the permit process. They're requesting a three-year deal for 2024, 2025, and 2026. This map shows the locations of the two new events, plus the addition of the Something in the Water Festival, so you can see the impacts to the oceanfront community. Thank you for your direction that you provided to the city manager to explore a competitive process for specified dates for the 2025 calendar. We look forward to working as a team to develop a plan to execute against that. There are representatives here today from both Odyssey and I Am Going, and we stand by for any questions that you may have on the presentation today.
Hey, any questions at this point? Barbara?
For the Odyssey, okay, the city will provide a $750,000 cash investment. They are going to provide $750,000 in dedicated media funds. Is that the same money, or is it another 750,000?
That it's the investment that they're making, they're giving back as a return so that we can use it to purchase advertising on Odyssey platforms.
Okay, so that is the $750,000 that the city is giving to them will be used for advertising?
Correct.
For $750,000, the city is buying $750,000 of advertisement from Odyssey.
It's a washer.
Okay, Sabrina?
Is that advertising and radio?
Yes, it's on all their, it's on the Odyssey platform, so it'd be radio, podcasts, and other digital platforms owned by Odyssey.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yep, Chris?
For the April date, it says the estimated attendance is 15,000. Is that for the entire event?
I believe that's per day.
Per day, okay.
There are representatives from Odyssey here, so did I answer that correctly?
Okay.
And then, secondly, we had a report a few weeks ago about the ROI and looking at different events. Are we expecting a return on this investment, or is this just an enhancement to each weekend? Because I know I've heard previously that not everything's meant to make money, so I want to be able to answer that question, is this to just provide entertainment with no expected return? Are we expecting a return on this $750,000 investment?
I don't know. Patrick, do you want to answer? You want me to answer?
I can't necessarily say that we'll make a return on investment as it relates to this one. You know, this will program and provide activities and entertainment for a weekend that we're already paying substantial amount of dollars for from a public safety standpoint, but I can't necessarily say that this one would turn a return for investment. I certainly think that's the hope of what we want, you know, and if desired by city council, we can do economic impact analysis for this, like how we typically do for these similar festivals.
Thank you.
I was going to go with Josh, and then Amelia, and then Michael.
I'll yield too.
And then Mark.
Okay, looking back at my phone, I got a message. One of our constituents texted to said this genre wouldn't appeal to college beach students as a replacement for Something in the Water. Can we ask the staff to kind of talk about that a minute? Those who are representing actually?
Sure, sure.
Don London, the Vice President. Come to the microphone.
I'm Sean Buford, I'm the Vice President of Sales at Odyssey. This is Don London, he's the Vice President of Programming and Operations, so I think we can answer any questions they have as it relates to programming. The area which we're going to program is to attract the most people to the event as possible. So knowing the demographics of the constituency coming down, we're going to program the most appropriate genre to make sure that they have a good time.
Thank you. And?
You know, we reach about a quarter of the whole market with our four stations. We take a lot of pride in giving the people what they want, and we've done that for 30 years now with this cluster. And we do a lot of research and have had a tremendous amount of experience collectively with our team to really determine who likes what, and we would certainly offer the best entertainment available to appeal to the most people as possible.
Thank you, because experience matter, and you saying 30 years, you saying, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And I think what's important also is to know not just Odyssey as a company, but to know what those, what the local assets are to you specifically. Those radio stations are 101, 32WD, it's your holiday music station that you're probably listening to right now, and 94.9 The Point, which is the home of Mike Powers and Woo in the Morning, WMBZ or Z104. I know many of you are familiar with Shaggy and how that radio station's programmed. And then, and then the last radio station is 95.7 R&B, which is the home of Steve Harvey Morning Show and features Teresa Brown and Charles Black. And collectively, those stations reach about a million people each week, so we have a diverse group of radio stations here locally, in addition to the fact that Don's been programming all of these radio stations and involved in operations capacity for 30 years. So we're very confident that we know the audience that we're trying to attract.
Thank you. Do you include any gospel, because we have people who listen to both on Sundays and...
Yeah, Walt Baby Love is featured every Sunday on, there you go. And then also, we also air Donnie McClurken every morning from 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. And in addition to that, Don does bike the radio station with gospel music, 95.7 R&B, every, every day, a couple of times.
Yeah, we've had a lot of success with Kirk Franklin, Mary Mary, Yolanda Adams. I mean, the list is endless, and that's why WBKL has been top-rated for 22 years now. And we also like to say, we've got a nice group of people on the air at our stations, and at the risk of sounding corny, they're playing a nice body of music, which attracts a nice audience, and we're really proud of our demographics and our psychographics as well. So we're very excited about the opportunity.
Thank you so much for your comprehensive discussion on that, so hopefully they have been listening, but thank you, and thank you Nancy.
Thank you, and thanks for listening, too.
Okay, Josh, Michael, then Mark.
Gentlemen, yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation and elaboration in terms of the genre, because the way it was reported in the paper did not, did not necessarily reflect that, and I can understand why some community members had some concern. This has been, obviously as you know, a challenging weekend for the city of Virginia Beach, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but many years ago, there was a group of community leaders, members of civic leagues, public safety representatives, representatives from colleges and universities that came together to try and assess how, instead of bracing against that weekend, we can embrace it instead. And, and I would, I would encourage you, if you already haven't, to reach out or at least be open to collaborating with community members.
We are very, sorry to cut you off. We're very, we're very open to collaborating with local, with local people, but we're also regionalizing this. One of the things that we've related to the festival or the opportunity to is Virginia owned, Virginia grown, Virginia known. So we want to take artists that are known in Virginia, artists that were grown in Virginia, and artists that are emerging from Virginia, hopefully Virginia Beach, because of what Pharrell has said, there truly is something in the water here, not just musically, but athletically, culturally, intellectually, that we all want to embrace, spiritually, we all want to embrace and bring that back together. This is by far one of the most exciting things that I, I get to be a part of as a Virginia Beach resident. I know exactly what I would love my city to be known for, and it's the same reasons why you all have chosen to, to put the effort to represent us. So that's exactly what we're going for.
And I really appreciate you offering the step up to fill this, this need, because I think most of the public knows, but maybe not everybody, that we don't have, we didn't control whether or not Something in the Water, you know, renewed or happened again in April. That was up to them. And I think this is good recognition in terms of trying to fill that, that space with some positivity, and in terms of, I guess, some of the ROI that we might be looking for, you know, off, off the bat. I mean, it's a $750,000 investment that, that we're, we're going to be getting back in terms of marketing value, and I think that's important to note. I would, I'd be interested, and I'm sure Nancy, you will, you know, be working with them closely to report out what, what those marketing dollars actually go to, go to do.
Absolutely. We've actually, there's an open-endedness to it, it can be used for, to attract people to reach across the entire Odyssey platform. So Nancy's right, we'll use some of our streaming elements, use our podcasting, use our over-the-air radio stations here locally, but also in traditional markets like Baltimore, Richmond, Washington, DC, New York City, Philadelphia, Cleveland.
Hey, Michael, then Mark.
This is Helman for this presentation, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I do have some questions for you, but I just want to share an observation. Before I was a member of city council, I was also a member of the Human Rights Commission, which has long been invested in the discussions around College Beach Weekend. In fact, I think there are members, I know there are members of RAC here, the Resort Advisory Committee, and at one time, in addition to the group Mr. Schulman referenced, the RAC and Human Rights Commission came together for a joint committee largely around making sure that we were responsive to the community and safety needs that were generated as part of College Beach Weekend, and that collaboration and committee continues to this day. And I want to thank the members who are here for their efforts, and also, we have Human Rights Commission representation here, too. So I want to thank those members for their continued engagement in the process. My view, observation, rather, is that our community has an expectation of a safe, peaceful, and enjoyable weekend. Both residents of Virginia Beach, oceanfront stakeholders, and the men and women, young men and women, who attend College Beach Weekend, both local, regionally, and from afar. We're all looking for the same thing, safe, peaceful, and enjoyable College Beach Weekend. And I think you struck on something that I think is going to be vital to ensuring that we can accomplish that goal, and that is the activation partnerships and community engagement with local individuals, influencers, and community organizations. I see that you've included a spotlight for local talent, as well as nonprofit and creative spaces, and I'm wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on those plans. I did hear you talk about showcasing local talent. There are many people in the community who are looking for that as a component for any proposal that occurs during College Beach Weekend, a true showcase of local talent, but also maybe taking it one step farther, a place where nonprofit organizations can share their mission and their goals, connect with other nonprofit organizations, and where the community can gather to connect more broadly. I think a lot of people are looking for that, including those who attend College Beach Weekend. Could you share a little bit more beyond what's in the PowerPoint about what your plans are for that?
Sure. I think that one of the things that, that excites us is the opportunity to turn the beach into a village of harmony and connectivity. One of the things that's super exciting for me is having a chance to, to work with local, with local organizations, local, local people who are steering us in the right direction and keeping the ship of, of communication afloat, offering us an opportunity to engage, meet the folks that are coming in, where they want to be met, but have them see and take the best part of Virginia Beach away with them, so that they can, so they can be advocate and be evangelical about the community, about the welcoming that they receive from us.
I think another important part about radio, too, and if you think about this, it's true, it's not a sales job, but television stations have viewers, and newspapers have readers, but radio stations have fans, and people say, man, that's my station, whether it's US 106, or WOWI, or, or The Point, or 2WD, or any of our competitors, FM 99, there's some great stations in this market, but they truly have fans, and we attract people that are passionate. We have artists that want us to hear their music, they want an opinion, they want an outlet, they want a contact at a record label, they want to perform at the casino in Portsmouth once a month with a local American Idol, if you will. We've had bands open for us, whether it was a B.J. Griffin or other people that went on to be big, big stars. We were in touch with Pharrell 20 years ago, before anybody ever knew his name, or knew his last name, or knew what he looked like, or, or his hat, his appearance, et cetera. We're really proud of that, and we've been on the ground floor in a lot of these bands where, you know, they played in our, our conference room before they ever had a hit record, and we get a kick out of that. You know, we, we've been fortunate that people gave us that opportunity. This is, it's a fun way to earn a living, and we're constantly in a pay-it-forward mode where we want to give back. We've been very lucky. We've worked hard, and we see this as a great opportunity to, not only, like you said, bring people together, but showcase people that are just looking for a chance, and that's so important.
That's it. Councilman, the follow-up to that, too, is that we, once we're, once we're set, we actually plan to create a whole initiative to where local people can get their involvement with us early and help us shape what that looks like, some of the content on, on the adjacent stages.
Thank you. That was just a quick follow-up that I wanted to offer. I know that Odyssey as an organization is very proactive about featuring and highlighting the work that nonprofit organizations are doing in the community, and I know that because I myself have, have been on programs that are part of the Odyssey Networks, sharing information about my volunteer work and nonprofit work. So I know that you make those resources available, and as a result, I'm confident that you have a portfolio of nonprofit partnerships that you can showcase this opportunity and tap into, and I was, and I was just also wondering what your plans are for doing that specifically, and then, but then you answered my next question, which is, how much of it can you create as you plan this to be responsive to what those nonprofit organizations and the communities, you know, are giving you feedback about what their, you know, best practices and what their optimum engagement might look like?
You know, we take a lot of pride in being really welded to the community. We are a for-profit business, but the reason we both have jobs, the reason our stations exist, is the federal government gave us a license to serve the community. That's our job one. We've raised millions of dollars for the Children's Hospital, thousands and thousands of pints of blood for the Red Cross, over a million toys now with Stuff the Bus, which we just finished last week, and we're constantly engaging the community to not only spread the message and get their word out, but, but also serve our listeners. We're there to serve our people, our clients, and our audience, and, you know, we, we look forward to embracing any and all partners that fit this, this type of event, whether it's Virginia Beach or some of the surrounding communities. People from Chesapeake come to the beach, people from Portsmouth, Hampton, Newport News, et cetera. I had people walking by my house at Something in the Water from the window down to the oceanfront from, from Richmond, so we're, we're here to serve the community and its community partners.
Mark? And then Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, and Ms. Helman for the presentation. I have three questions. First, for the two gentlemen with Odyssey, the $750,000, you may not have an exact budget now, but what areas, what is that money being spent for? Is it for entertainment or...
Well, that will be, the $750,000 investment from the city of Virginia Beach, that'll be for the entire, for the entire collection of the event, so both from, from a talent acquisition standpoint, construction, labor, all, everything that's related to it.
That does segue into the next question, really, from Ms. Helman as well. So the cost for the setup and security, and what does that look like? Because it looks like it's two weeks, May 23rd to June 5th. Is it fences? Is it, is the boardwalk, boardwalk closed off? Is the beach closed off?
So I won't have an answer to all of those questions till we have the permit application submitted, as well as all the operations meeting that, operations meetings that our resort management office will begin, once we have approval to move forward. Once we have approval to move forward, we'll start building all of that information, and then, when it's appropriate, and then the city manager gives me the nod, I'll be happy to come back and share that information with what the footprint for each of these events will look like.
But it's not ticketed, or is...
So they are, they're both ticketed events. They have, they have free components and ticketed components to both of them, which is really nice, because it gets, it broadens the scope of who can attend.
Okay, Sabrina?
So just to, for clarity purposes, and, you know, making sure the public understands, following up on that $750,000 cash, I don't think I've seen a deal like that since my tenure on council. That's a, that's a huge investment to put into a festival. So in terms of my understanding of that 750 cash, that's for marketing and other, or is it just for marketing?
Yeah, so the $750,000 investment by the city will be returned back to the city in an advertising, an opportunity for advertising for the destination for tourism out of market. It will give us a chance to, where we have a budget currently for advertising out of market in radio, we'll reprogram that money in other ways, in digital and in, in ad spend, but it's an opportunity for us to promote Virginia Beach as a destination.
So don't we already have a marketing group that already does that for us? What's, what's the difference? And I think, last time I checked, there was over $300,000 that we paid into that marketing company or to market Virginia Beach. What's the difference there?
So Virginia Beach markets on various platforms all around the world, actually, not just in the United States. It can be in digital, it can be in print, it can be in radio, it can be in linear television, it can be commercials, all the ways to talk to people who are... it can be commercials, all the ways to talk to people who are dreaming about vacation planning. Those are the ones that we want to talk to all the time about coming to Virginia Beach. So we do have a portion of our spend that is in radio. We'll likely, since we'll have this opportunity, be able to repurpose the portion that we currently have in our budget to do additional buys in digital space, or to promote other things, other ways. We will have oversight of where and how this money is spent. It'll be in markets that are at the choosing of the city of Virginia Beach. So it'll be in markets that we're currently talking to, to clients and guests that we'd like to attract to Virginia Beach. And then, the Miles Partnership, who is the advertising agency of record for the city, will help us oversee it.
So my other question is for local artist piece. And I'm very intentional in that piece, because, as you mentioned, we have a lot of local artists who certainly are fabulous. Of course, we know Pharrell is from Virginia Beach, and so there are a lot of artists who are very talented and do want to be showcased in our local festivals. And so, even with Something in the Water, we saw, you can have some of the best intentions to reach out to the local artists and highlight them. But I think what's important, when you are trying to ensure that you highlight local artists, is that you have some type of strategy. Who are you looking at? How are you getting access to those local artists? And are you bringing them to the table to work with you? And so, I think those kinds of things are important. I actually think more of a memorandum of understanding should be developed between festivals and the city of Virginia Beach, to make sure that we are deliberate and intentional in creating those opportunities for our local and creatives, so that when we say that we want to include them, we have information that says, "This is what we expect, and this is what you're supposed to give us," in terms of that agreement. So what's the strategy here? How are we just not, you know, good intentions are great, but what's going to be the strategy to reach out to those artists and make sure they are included and actually have an active role in participating?
Well, Councilwoman, I think I'll take a shot at that. So here is one thing that's important to know, is that currently, right now, of our four radio stations, we actually have run a local event where we are highlighting local talent, and have highlighted local talent for the last six months at the casino in Portsmouth, mostly featuring R&B-type performers. But all those elements that we do to acquire those persons who have participated in that event, called the Come Up Live, at the casino in Portsmouth, we will utilize to incorporate on our other brands, to bring those different genres of music and the people that like that format to the table as well. Plus the fact that we will run a marketing campaign to solicit information and to cultivate, help us cultivate the festival with our own marketing efforts that we'll put on as a call-out, both on our digital, social media, and across over the air on the radio.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, and then Amelia.
Just questions for the reggae festival. And thank you, gentlemen. It says a three-year partnership, so are we looking at $900,000 for three years, or $300,000 for one year?
It would be $300,000 per year for three years.
So if we were to vote on it, it would be $300,000 per year.
But I believe that that's based on per budgets and appropriations.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
On a different topic, this came up, like I was one of the councilors on Something in the Water, and we had people talk about food, about the restaurants not getting a chance to have, you know, their wares. And also, we had some local people who do culinary, said they did not get a chance to even put it in. Can you kind of talk about that aspect, because people will eat?
No, we hope they do, because that's what tax revenue. So one of the things that we, we're not Something in the Water organizers. The one thing that is true, the same for Bobby and the team going, is that we're going to be here when we're done. So we have a lot to account for, and a lot of people in the community to walk by in town center, or at the oceanfront, or share a meal with later. So we're going to do every, we're going to take every measure we can to be even-handed in the distribution of communication, and the access that we're going to be able to grant people to participate. And it's, a lot of these things are going, we're going to ask for your help, too, Councilwoman, and we're going to ask for Nancy's help and Bill's, as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else at this point? I just want to thank you. You know, once again, I think, you know, what we're proving is that the oceanfront is a destination for multiple folks to come out, something for everybody throughout the year. And I think, over the last year or two, we proved that it's a safe place to come, a welcoming place for everybody. And if you look at the variety of genres that we have out there, you know, it just makes Virginia Beach a destination. You know, we really have a unique capacity to have these type of events on a regular basis, where some cities may not have that capacity. But once again, I think as we define ourselves as a city, and then we're able, that when we do have a change in a schedule or things, that we're able to respond and, you know, backfill it in a very competent and efficient way, that we fill the gap and the need that we have. So, but once again, I just want to compliment, and I think even the reggae festival, you know, that's going to attract a new crowd to Virginia Beach. But once again, I think as, you know, we market ourselves as the true destination, you know, this is what we want. But I just want to thank you all for coming, for throwing your hat in the ring, and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, as part of our requirement, we're going to do a presentation regarding the city's audited financials and year and financials. And I think we're going to be kicked off by a member of the city auditor's office, who's going to introduce our outside audit team. Is Gretchen coming up?
Yeah, ready.
All right, so Mayor, it looks like the city auditor's office is not here, so we'll have somebody. Okay, so, all right. So, Mr. Mayor, our finance director will introduce our outside auditor.
Okay, great. Welcome!
Good afternoon. Letitia Shelton, Finance Director. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Today, we have our annual financial presentation from our external auditor, Sherry Beckett. Here to present our findings is Logan Booth, from, again, Sherry Beckett Auditting Firm.
All righty. Thank you, Letitia. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, other members of council, for having me here today. And as Letitia mentioned, I'm here to present the results of the fiscal year 2023 audit of the city's financial statements. Yeah, you can, can you just air over? You can go to the next slide. So first, we have our client service team. The engagement is led by Laura Harden. She's the engagement director for the audit team, with Rob Churchman, serving as our second partner quality reviewer. I'm Logan Booth, I'm the senior manager. I've been on the audit since we won it back in fiscal year 2021, with Chandler Ward as our senior. So, we issued our audit opinion on Thursday, December 7th. It was a clean audit opinion on the financial statements. Our audit, sorry, you can go to the next slide. The audit includes an audit of the financial statements, in addition to audit under the government auditing standards, as well as the specifications provided by the auditor of public accounts of the Commonwealth of Virginia. So we did not identify any matters of noncompliance or findings as it relates to government auditing standards or the APA specifications, and we did not have any material weaknesses over internal controls of financial reporting. We did have two matters, which we will go into more detail on, which we defined as internal control findings 2023-01 and 2023-02. And those are listed in the back of the financial statements on the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs, and we'll go into more details on those in a couple slides. So also, as part of our audit, we do what is called a single audit, which is an audit of the city's federal awards. And we test the major programs of the city under the uniform guidance, and we did not have any compliance findings and/or any material weaknesses as it relates to the city's federal awards. So auditing standards require us to communicate any internal control findings that we have as it relates to the city, whether it be compliance matters, internal controls over financial reporting. So as I mentioned, you can go to the next slide, we did have two matters, which we defined as significant deficiencies. So, under the auditing standards, there are two classifications of internal control findings, one being a material weakness, which is a, it is a deficiency whereby there is a pervasive risk that the financial statements could be materially misstatement or misstated. So we did not have any findings that led us to believe that the financial statements were materially misstated. But we did have two items that we noted as significant deficiencies, and we'll go into more detail on those. So the first significant deficiency is 2023-01. And this relates to, there were certain capital project balances that the city discovered in fiscal year 2023 that were inappropriately accounted for in the fiscal year 2022 financial statements, and those assets related to the Atlantic Park project, whereby in the early stages of the Atlantic Park project, there was not a clear understanding of who owned the assets relating to the project, and there was some double counting between the Virginia Beach Development Authority and the city. So in fiscal year 23, there was a reconciliation done involving the VBDA to ensure that the assets were appropriately accounted between the city and VBDA. And I believe there was a memo provided to council, kind of explaining the situation, maybe in a little more layman's terms, but I'll pause there to see if there are any questions or anything I can clarify on.
Anything up, Josh?
And I do appreciate, and we do appreciate that memo. And I also think it would be of benefit to the public to describe a little bit of that in layman's terms, so that everybody fully understands.
Sure, yes. So, as I mentioned, in fiscal year 23, it was discovered that prior to the current year, there were capital projects and capital assets that were accounted for on both the development authority's books and the city's books, and that was just a matter of not reconciling between the two. So there was assets being recorded on both sets of books, and there was no misappropriation of funds, no misuse of funds. It was purely a reporting function whereby they had the assets on both sets of books. When had they reconciled at the end of the year in '22, or previously, they would have discovered that the city should have appropriately reported a contribution and/or vice versa. Certainly.
Any other thing else at this point?
So next, we did have an additional significant deficiency noted as 2023-02, whereby during our audit procedures over expenditures, we noted two invoices that were for expenditures in fiscal year 2023 that were paid in fiscal year 2024, but not appropriately accounted for in the '23 financial statements. So when we presented them to city finance, they confirmed that the expenditure should have been accounted for in the fiscal year 2023 financial statements. So they recorded corrected journal entries to ensure the financial statements were materially correct. And they also went back to ensure the procedures that they had performed previously did not have any remaining differences that were below our testing thresholds. So, at the end of the day, we all confirmed that the error was captured correctly, and the financial statements were materially correct as a result of the correction. And I'll, before we move on, I'll pause if there are any questions on the second significant deficiency.
Any questions?
All right. And then, next here, we, the auditing standards require us to communicate corrected and uncorrected misstatements, and both of those relate to those significant deficiencies whereby, for the corrected misstatements, the city, as a result of our audit procedures, corrected the errors that we identified. And then on the next slide, we have the uncorrected misstatement, which is, for the significant deficiency relating to the Atlantic Park project, it's considered an uncorrected misstatement because the city had the option to restate the beginning balances, and rather than restating prior year financial statements, because it was not material, they just corrected those amounts in the current fiscal year. So moving on, auditing standards require us to highlight some of the significant accounting policies of the city, as defined in one of the financial statements. There were two new accounting standards that the city implemented in fiscal year 23, first of those being GASB statement number 94, as it relates to public-private and public-partnerships. And that statement really had no impact on the city's financials, no material impact. But GASB statement number 96 was adopted, and as that relates to subscription-based IT arrangements. So previously, any long-term IT agreements that the city was involved with, they would just be expensed in the current year, whereby, under GASB statement number 96, there's an asset and a liability, and that those assets and liabilities are amortized over the life of the agreement. So we're kind of removing it from the income statement and bringing the liability onto the balance sheet. Auditing standards require us to perform certain procedures over related party transactions of the city. So that would be the Atlantic Park Community Development Authority, the Virginia Beach CDC, Virginia Beach Development Authority, and the schools. And so we review all transactions, related party balances with those related parties to ensure everything is appropriately accounted for, and all the transactions are in the normal course of business. And we did not identify any significant or unusual transactions with related parties. Overall, we did not identify any other significant or unusual transactions that we would have been required to communicate to you all. And there are, moving on, there are certain financial statement line items that are subject to management estimate and management input, that we are required to perform additional procedures to, as it relates to allowance doubt for accounts on taxes receivable, depreciation on capital assets, and the actuarially computed pension and OPEB liabilities and assets. And then lastly, we, our audit is to ensure that the financial statements include all the necessary disclosures, which we confirm that they do. The auditing standards require that we be independent of the city in order to perform the audit. And while we do perform certain nonattest services, we ensure there are appropriate individuals within finance and management that take responsibility for those items, so that we can remain independent with the city. And then lastly, just some final communications that are required under the auditing standards. If we had encountered any difficulties or disagreements with management throughout the course of the audit, we would be required to communicate those. Thankfully, Letitia, her group, everyone in finance, everyone in the various departments that we work with over the course of the audit, everyone is always great to work with and very helpful in us conducting the audit. And then the third box there, auditor consultations. If the city had gone to a separate accounting firm over any sort of contentious topics or matters, we would be required to communicate them to you all, and we are not aware of any such consultations. And the last box there, the management representation letter we received from management as of the report of our audit report date. So we received that representation letter on December 7th, Thursday, when we issued our audit. And we are not aware of any other management consultations with any other accounting firms. We did not have any other findings or issues that were not communicated to you all previously, and we're not aware of any fraud or illegal acts that the city was involved with. with. And and then lastly, there are certain components of the financial statements that are separate from the basic financial statements that we apply certain limited procedures on and then are not included necessarily as a part of our opinion. And those are the required supplementary information, the other supplementary information and other information. And each of those items are just in relation to our opinion over the basic financial statements, although they are not included under our opinion. And lastly, just highlighting some upcoming financial reporting and auditing changes that we'll be working with Letitia and her group on as it relates to upcoming fiscal years. But with that, I will open it up to any questions, comments?
Okay, any questions or comments? I guess you did a good job. Hey, thank you all, and I appreciate the finance team for, you know, the great work you continue to do all the time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, so one other part of this is the city's comptroller, Kevin Kevin Cabas is going to come and give counsel a overview of the city's finances. And just a note of context, counsel, last year in fiscal year 23, our finance team handled approximately 225,000 financial transactions, which equated to about $82 billion worth of transactions moving through the city's financial system. So for them to handle over two around 225,000 transactions and only have three deficiencies out of that, and all of them are immaterial, just kind of shows what a testament and amazing job our team does.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Logan was here presenting the results of the audit opinion, I just did want to mention we did receive the unmodified opinion. That is the highest result you can get on the audit. So he reported the results of the audit. I'm here to present you the financial results for fiscal year 2023. You received in your package on Friday, a PDF copy of our annual comprehensive financial report on your desk today. Is that hard copy right off the press? We got it this morning from the print shop, so it's all there for you. When you think about city government, there's two important documents that the city will produce, one being the city budget, which is the plan, the spending plan for that fiscal year. And then the second one being the annual comprehensive financial report, which is the actual results for that fiscal year. So that's what I'm here to present for you today. First, starting off here with the statement in net position, looking at the main thing here to concentrate on, some of you may remember I was here last year when we're talking about pension liability. We were coming off 21% returns on pension liability, and we had the lowest liability we have had in the past 20 years. Last year, we had or VRS had 1% return on their pension assets, so that liability has gone up. It increased 95 million for the city and 87 million for the schools. But important thing to notice on that, it is at 85% funding status. So that is considered good when you're looking at your bond rating agencies, they looked at as a very well funded pension. And VRS had just released the results for their investments in FY23, and they were at 6.1% returns. So when we come back here next year, we'll be looking at that liability going down as a result of us making payments to it, plus as a result of their investments. Also too, in our other long term liabilities, we'll note that they decreased $40 million from where they were as of last year. So we're doing a good job paying down those liabilities. Here we've got the general fund budget to actual. We noticed the total budget of $1.4 billion, which your revenue budget saw an increase of about 10.7% from last year. We have an expenditure budget of 1.5 billion, and that difference right there is made up of the use of fund balance, a planned use of fund balance of 119 million. We saw the total revenues came in slightly above budget, 3.2 billion dollars or 0.2%. So when you think of that large amount of that's of budget of revenue, that's a very good job budgeting. So kudos to Kevin and his team over in budget. Expenditures came in under budget 129 million or 8.7%. So that resulting in a 13.2 million dollar increase in fund balance. So fund balance at the beginning of the year, 328.9 million, taking into account the reservations of fund balance, we ending with unassigned fund balance of 196.1 or 13.85% of the subsequent year budgeted revenues. So just wanted to go through what a breakdown of what those reservations were. So we have the non spendables such as inventories and loans receivable. Those loans consist of the loans that we make to the volunteer rescue squad so they can use for their ambulances. We have the CSB, Human Services, their restricted fund balance. Also reported within the general fund, we have the School Reserve Fund and the Flood Protection Fund. So those are pulled out of our fund balance here. And then we've also have the use of the fund balance within the 24 budget, which so that brought us down to the 196.1 million dollar unassigned balance that I was talking about, which was the 13.85%, which is slightly above what the city council policy is of eight to 12. This right here just being a history of a 10 year history of what that fund balance has been. We saw that decrease in '21 coming right off, you know, during the middle of the pandemic. But since then, it has gone back up and has for the past two years has been over the 13%. Just a quick breakdown of some of the general fund revenues. We saw real estate taxes come slightly in under budget, a lot of that dealing with additional tax relief more than what was anticipated when the budget was adopted. We have sales tax and utility tax while they were under budget, they were outperforming the prior years. Business license, hotel and meal tax, all above budget. So that helps showing the strong local economy. We had other local taxes under budget that mainly related to taxes on deeds, as we see with mortgage interest rates at a higher, you'll have less people that are refinancing. So therefore, that taxes received on the deeds, the city won't receive. Then other local revenue, a large increase mainly due to interest revenue, a good time, a good year with the city investing the money that it has with the treasurer's office. So that's showing the close to $11 million over budget with that. When reviewing the total expenditures for the city, we see the major portion of that being a transfer to education. We also have our salaries and fringe benefits. In the general fund, the total budget was 484 million for salaries and benefits, and we came in 4.1% under budget on that. Just wanted to give a quick breakdown of our major enterprise funds here. We have water and sewer, stormwater, waste management and parking. Water and sewer and stormwater both continued to show a increase in net position, just showing a strong investment in capital assets related to those funds and the money that we're investing into the capital projects. With the operating statement for the enterprise funds, operating revenues, you know, showed a small increase even while operating expenses increased, which brought us to, you can go to the next slide, Jesse, a change in net position for water and sewer of 10 million, stormwater 23, while waste management and parking had a small decrease. Just wanted to highlight here some of our long term debt annual payments that we make. In total, we retired 100 almost 123 million of principal payments on our debt plus interest of 51 million. We had city pension expense of 67 million. And you see that was slightly or 12 million higher than the prior year as VRS rate changed from 18.25 or it changed to 18.25 from 16%. So VRS increased the city's pension contribution rate for FY23 and '24. And I just wanted to highlight here that next week, we'll be putting out the PAFR, the Popular Annual Financial Report. And what that is, it's about a 20 page document that turns the ACFR into a more friendly read, I would say. It highlights all the financial information, but it does provide a lot more information that's good for citizens to use. So you'll be receiving that in your package next week. And also wanted to highlight that we did receive, I don't know if it was ever formally announced, but we did receive the GFOA award for excellence in financial reporting for both our annual comprehensive financial report and our popular annual financial report last year. So with that, turn it over.
Okay, any questions? Michael?
Slide eight. And I'm just curious in the as compared to other, you know, municipalities and what we're looking for, what an ideal distribution would look like? If you could share, you know, how Virginia Beach matches up in this? And I recognize that there may be different because there's different municipalities, fund schools in different ways, but do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
We can do some within the state and then some outside the state to get how that school portion of it matches up because you'll have a lot of them.
No, I'm just curious, like, is is that the right, is that the distribution you're looking for? And and how does that reflect, you know, the management practices we all here?
So I think I'm.
In terms of percentages and.
Of the support we provide schools?
No, just in general. You're looking at that chart, you're spending, you know, roughly this that amount on salaries versus operating versus benefits versus.
Yeah.
How does that match up with what with what model healthy municipalities look like?
It depends on what state you're in, right? So like in Virginia, since that we're charged with supporting the schools, I think you'll see most municipalities in the Commonwealth have a good transfer in terms of independent cities, in terms of what they got to schools. And I think the makeup would always show that salaries tend to be the public government's main budget driver, right? You know, I think at any given time, I think probably a good 70, 75, 80% of the city's budget is driven by personnel salaries, you know, because we provide services and that tends to be the thing that we bring to the table. But I think that's probably a general breakdown in the Commonwealth. If you go to other states where the cities or the counties in the they have independent school districts with their own taxing authority, you'll probably see salaries be the biggest driver and not so much on a transfer to schools.
As a percentage of expenditures, that services in line with what?
Yeah, I think Davenport will come and give a presentation after that as well, but that's well, that's well in line with our adopted policies.
Hey, anyone else? Again, once again, outstanding work, you know, we're in a pride for our city. And, you know, thank you for what you continue to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the city's financial advisors, Davenport Company will come and give counsel a year end sense of where we are in terms of our financial models and our financial projections. No decision is needed by counsel on this presentation at this time. This is really just to kind of give counsel a sense of where we are in a sense of time and the different assumptions that we assume to kind of project out where we are as it relates to our flood protection bond program, our current program CIP, and also some future opportunities or future needs that we may have in terms of investment to get a sense if we were to do a significant plus up, what that actually means for in terms of the city's debt metrics. So at this time, we turn it over to David Rose, and he'll start the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. President be here. Again, I'm David Rose, and I manage our practice at Davenport. What we're going to do today is turn it over to my partner, Kyle Augs, and he's going to walk you through what you should have in front of you. I would just say on the on the heels of what has been presented that we're able to do this today because we said before, you have a tremendous staff. You've got depth, you've got breadth, experience, and again, starting with the city manager and going through Letitia and others. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kyle, and we certainly will be here to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's nice to see you this afternoon, as always. Reviewing the presentation this afternoon is a bit of a continuation of the last time we were pleased to be in front with in front of you, which is basically about January. So it's been about a year, not quite technically, still calendar 2023, but as our colleague Austin hands the book out here, what we have is an update to Patrick, the manager's point of some of the long term capital planning, the debt planning things that have been done since we last spoke, again, in the January time period. Informational, and so our intent here is to have this be, you know, sort of a continuation of the conversation. There's certainly a lot of things going on within Virginia Beach in terms of the capital needs. And so I just want to give you some of that perspective under a couple of different scenarios and certainly answer any questions that you have. And so with that as a background, I'll highlight two things on this background page. There's really two important concepts that you'll see within this book. The first is debt capacity, and you see that in the middle of the page there. What that really means is are we in compliance and are we projected to be in compliance with our city imposed financial policy guidelines that really are benchmarks to the rating agencies to maintain our AAA ratings? So that's debt capacity. That's number one, you see in the middle of the page. The second concept is debt affordability. And what we mean by that is where are the revenues going to come from to make the payments on the debt that we take out for purposes of the capital program? And so both of those concepts are within these numbers in this book. We'll highlight both of them again as a continuation of the conversation. Underpinning everything that we're doing, working with your staff, and to echo David, you do have top notch staff, and we appreciate it, makes our job easier. Underpinning everything that we're doing is the city's AAA credit ratings. So on page number two here, we just show you visually, just as a reminder, the city has three AAA credit ratings, was the highest possible credit ratings that you can have. And so as we talk about the planning, we talk about the projections, that all and sort of underscores the fact that we want to make sure we maintain those AAA ratings. And so we'll show you that going forward. As we flip the page, another critical assumption, you may recall this from late last calendar year, early of this calendar year, city imposed financial policy guidelines. You as a city have had financial policy guidelines for a long time. You may recall that we as a city just updated those recently, kind of modernizing them in a sense. And so you are in compliance with them, and we highlight those from a debt perspective here on the page. As we start talking about some of these projections going forward, we're going to measure compliance relative to those policies really over like the next 10 years or thereabouts. And so we just highlight those there on page number three. On page number four, so at the core of the forward looking piece of what debt will the city be taking on into the future is obviously the city council adopted CIP or Capital Improvement Program. And so we start here with just a couple of highlights for you, all pulled from the city's adopted CIP. Item number one there is your charter bonds. And so what we've done in these projections is we've taken into account those what we call charter bonds, general obligation bonds, that the city council has approved in prior budgets, that just haven't been issued yet because of the timing of the projects. We're also taking into account those charter bonds that are projected to be approved going forward within that five to six year CIP. So those two total about 750 million of charter bonds. And so that's the first piece that we're layering in as we go forward. The second piece, public facility revenue bonds, another just borrowing program that is used to fund our tax supported capital programs. We're not talking about water and sewer, we're not talking about stormwater. So this is the the tax supported side of things. Similar exercise, we look at the PFRBs, to use that acronym that have been already authorized, just not issued. We also look at what's in the CIP going forward. Those two total about 785 million over the next five or six years. And so that gets you to bottom line number three, about a billion five plus or minus of tax supported debt that is already built in to our either previously adopted budgets and CIPs or going forward, sort of planned CIP. So about a billion five sort of at the core, at the base of what we're going to start layering in.
Kyle, before you go forward, Mr. Mayor, members of council, when Kyle suggests that we're not talking about stormwater, he's talking about the stormwater program funded by the ERU.
Correct.
And the flood protection stormwater projects are in the city's general obligation debt.
Thanks for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And to that point exactly, on page number five, exactly our flood protection program. And so this is, to the manager's point here, a part of the tax supported debt that will be issued by the city going forward. What is different here than the last time we were able to speak with you is we've gotten some new. some new numbers from Jacobs Engineering, which is your consultant that is helping to, to work with your public works folks in terms of the cost of that program over the life cycle. And so we have those new numbers, new estimates, uh, baked into these scenarios going forward. Uh, you all recall city council, uh, that the referendum approved, uh, 567 and a half million dollars of charter bonds for that flood protection programs. We've got that factored in. Um, as you look at the table at the bottom of the page there, that's represented in kind of the light blue boxes. And so we're taking into account the spending schedule that Jacobs has given to us and taking that into account over really the next decade. So you see the three blue boxes there, the first being about 118 million that would be borrowed in the upcoming, really about six months, followed by about 149 million and in 2028, about 298 million. So those three total the 567 that's already been approved and authorized by the voters. We then, in terms of the new numbers from Jacobs again, uh, as the cost of this project of the life cycle of it has gone up, given inflationary pressures that we've all seen, we've identified about 310 million of costs for the flood protection program that will need to be funded, that is over and above that original 567. And so as you look at that visually on the page, those don't occur until about 2030. So we've got a number of years to be sort of thinking about that and planning for it. But we thought it was important to bring to city council, let you see some of these numbers, uh, because again, that five or so years can go quickly. And so we want to be on the forefront of that and the thinking proactively about those costs and the revenue that will need to be identified to pay for it into the future. Uh, so in essence, we're going to show this to you two ways, the 567, um, as well as the 567 plus the 310. To that point, on page number six, um, what we really have is three scenarios for discussion. I'll move relatively quickly through these, but we want to show you both of the policy implications and the cash flow implications, um, of a variety of these different variables. The first scenario, uh, really we'll call that our, our baseline, our status quo scenario. What that first scenario is doing is taking care of the existing CIP, like we talked about, about a billion five and taking care of the 567 million for the flood protection program. So that's our baseline, uh, nothing new, so to speak, over and above what's already been adopted within the CIP. We then move down to the blue box and what scenario 1B is doing is that simply taking 1A and that's adding the additional 310 million of the new costs for the flood protection program. So the only difference between 1A and 1B is in 1B, we're adding that additional 310 million for flood, excuse me, flood protection, just like we talked about in the prior page. We then at the bottom of the page will show you a scenario two. What scenario two does is it takes scenario 1B and it adds a further series of projects that for purposes of this discussion are very much order of magnitude for discussion purposes, just wanted to give council and mayor a sense of things. There's a detail on the back of the booklet in terms of the appendix, but to the extent there are priorities that are over and above what's already in the CIP, we wanted to give you, mayor and council, a flavor of what that might look like in terms of debt capacity and debt affordability. So that number is about 730 million over and above what's already in scenario 1A. Uh, so as we move to page seven, and I'll go relatively quickly here, just to give you a sense of the timing of it, um, all estimates at this point, the assumption is we're borrowing on an annual basis, um, in average annual amounts of about 150 million dollars. The way the city borrows, that depends upon the actual timing of the projects, but on average, uh, we're expecting about 150 million plus or minus each and every year. So as we go to page eight, again, we'll start with the debt capacity side of things. These are our city council imposed policies. You can visually see here, if you just look at those red lines relative to the bars, we want to make sure those bars aren't going above the red lines. On the left-hand side, debt to assessed value, plenty of capacity there. And so the baseline, uh, very much works within that policy. Right-hand side, debt service to the budget, uh, to the councilman's prior question from the prior presentation, you see that we're very much within the city council adopted policy of 10%. And so this baseline from those two policies works with the CIP Incorporated. We'll flip the page to page nine. Two other policies here, a fixed cost ratio, kind of lumps together, the debt service and the pensions, that's also okay. As you look at that red line versus the bars, the payout ratio on the right-hand side, make sure we're not paying the debt off too slowly and pushing things to future generations, that's also fine in this baseline scenario. So from a debt capacity standpoint, the baseline, the existing CIP is in compliance with the policies. As we go to page 10, we'll then shift gears to debt affordability. So this is the budgetary impact of things, where the dollar is going to come from to make these debt service payments. We've broken this into a couple of different pieces, but wanted to show mayor and council just a kind of graphical representation here. Uh, on the left-hand side, what you see is the current dollars in the budget for purposes of debt service are sufficient for about the next five or so fiscal years. But as you look into those future fiscal years, you enter years six, seven, and eight, what you begin to see is a need for additional dollars over and above what's in the budget right now. And so understanding there's pressures on both the operational side and the capital side, we wanted to show this to obviously mayor and council as you're thinking about the budget insofar as the current dollar is sufficient for the moment, but to the extent you have surprises in terms of the cost of things, to the extent projects move a little bit faster, um, we'd really look at making sure that we've got sufficient dollars and hopefully dollars that are growing within the budget to continue making debt service payments, uh, for these projects. Similar theme on page 11, just a couple of the other funds, the tip fund, the parks fund, um, again, these two for the moment relatively smaller and so in good shape. The big focus here is the general fund, um, under that status quo. As we go to page 12, debt affordability. On the flood protection program, we talked about the existing 567 million under the status quo, under the baseline of just 567, the current revenue under these assumptions is sufficient to continue paying for that 567. So the original plan of the 567 still works in that sense. We'll look at in the next scenario what happens when we add about 300 million over and above that.
Hey, we have a question from Chris.
Sir, councilman.
Page 10, so when you look at red line and the increase in potential, the flood referendum and then potentially building three, four, five new schools, um, revenues not growing at the same rate, can you just give the general public what would happen if revenues just stayed flat? And then we get to 28, 29, 30, and this light green debt service is going up?
Correct.
Just help us in layman terms what that means for the.
So what that means, and to your point, this, this really does not yet incorporate the additional flood. We're going to show that to you in the next slide, in the next series of slides. It doesn't yet incorporate some of the maybe new concepts the schools are talking about. And so as you look at that page, page 10, the baseline without anything new, so to speak, is okay. But as we think about flood, we know, given what Jacobs has given us, that that is more expensive by virtue of inflation. And so the expectation is we're going to need more dollars to make those payments, not immediately, but those revenues to make debt service payments on flood, on schools, we expect are going to need to grow over the next several years in order to fully fund those.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just to clarify one thing, um, the previous slides, Davenport kind of showed where we were in terms of our financial debt metrics and we're well beyond that. What these slides are showing is based on how the programs are growing and what we're seeing is that we're going to have to make additional budget decisions on dedicating more of the operating budget towards covering debt service, right? You know, so it's not necessarily saying that the red line here is saying that we're in any like tripping any metrics or anything like that, but it's just saying that as we get to these different years, we might have to make other policy decisions about taking some of the operating budget that we have now for programming services to pay debt service, assuming, um, what actions we take as it relates to assuming growth and assessments and things like that.
Barbara.
Increase in the flood projects is having to come from debt. You're not calculating that we're going to be getting some from the federal government and hopefully some from the state government and such other places?
The number, the number, the 876 that they're presenting already assumes that we have some of the grants that we've already received to date. And you're right, Councilmember Henley, we may receive more grants, like for example, um, Jacobs has briefed you last week and Jacobs said the flood protection program is now a billion bucks, right? You know, 576 plus the 310 is 876. That difference between the 876 and the billion is what we're already projecting as the grants that we've received already. But we are actively always pursuing grants. So you're right, Councilmember Henley, we may, um, get additional grants that reduce out that obligation or the program will continue to grow more money because as, as we get to each stage of, um, design, like for example, the Central Beach one, where such an early preliminary scale of design, that number likely is going to increase substantially as well. But you're right, it's, it's assumptions and assumptions can change along the way, but right now we're assuming the grants that we already know that we have in place and we can assume, we can realize more grants as well.
Okay, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are the cost estimates in the out years that we just, are there's inflation adjusted or are there's today?
Uh, to my knowledge, inflation adjusted, and what Jacobs is doing is taking into account estimates of inflation, uh, when they're doing those numbers.
For this one that we're looking at now with the schools fund, um, is that there existing CIP right now? And if and when we hear differently from, um, the PPA process, that, that obviously could change depending on what that guaranteed maximum price is.
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
If I could just say, I think it underscores, you know, the need, you know, going forward, you know, to create new revenue streams, you know, hopefully with companies like Amazon coming in, but also, you know, with the, you know, with the cables coming in from overseas and the broadband and things of that nature, we actually may, you know, be able to create significantly new revenue streams that will help us confront the future.
Yes, Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor. While we're on the topic of assumptions, if I, I know you're in the middle of your presentation, but I want to go ahead and ask, on the 567 and a half million dollar, um, projection, was the cost of the buy of the debt then different then than today? Was that, and is that significantly adding to our extra cost? And, and then how do you judge going forward the cost of debt?
Yeah, it's a good question. So what we've assumed within here in terms of an interest rate, I think maybe that's your question, councilman, is we've assumed a 5% interest rate when we've done our assumptions in here. That's been a good long-term planning assumption. It's above the current market, even though rates are higher than they were during the all-time lows, it's above the current markets. We purposely have a little margin for error in there. We don't control rates, you don't control rates. We like to err on the more conservative aside. So if we went and borrowed that, you know, soon, we're probably solidly in the fours, maybe a little bit below depending on the day. Um, so we've assumed 5% when we're running all this. Just one more question while we're.
How about consideration for a recession or future event? How do you calculate for that? I know you can't predict it, but it's a possibility.
Yeah, it is. Um, you can't predict it, you're right. And so what we're not necessarily talking about in here per se, but it is very, very important, and we heard it in the prior conversation with the, the audit, um, is the fund balances of the city. And so as you think about a recession and the potential for it, we don't pretend to know that one way or the other, but one of the single best ways to protect against that is to make sure you've got very strong fund balances, uh, to help cushion through some of those potentially slower time periods and give you time to kind of make those adjustments and be able to prove the rating agencies, you've got that financial flexibility if indeed things do slow down.
Okay, anybody else at this point?
Thank you.
So, um, on page 13, um, we'll go through scenario 1B, I'll go relatively quickly. Uh, the only thing we're really changing here in scenario 1B is we're adding that additional 300 million on the flood protection program. So as you look at page 13, we've highlighted there that flood column, you know, in the prior section, that was 567, this is now 876. That difference is just the additional cost in the out years of the CIP. To the councilwoman's question about potential grants, we want to err on the more conservative side, to the extent there's grants in the future, this will look better. But for the moment, if we don't err, if we have those, we're not assuming that, sort of the, you're not counting the chickens before they hatch, uh, kind of scenario.
We've already hatched. You didn't count those either, so.
They, they are.
We have, we have. The one, the ones that are known are already baked in.
Yeah. And just to clarify again, if we didn't count those, Councilmember Henley, that 876 would be a billion bucks, right? So basically the 876 is the difference between the billion, right? So basically we, we assumed we've, we've already counted in here the grants we've already received and that was, that's what brought it to 876.
That's a pretty substantial amount then.
Ma'am, it is. I think given that, that a number of these pages haven't changed, we can go right to page 18. And so the next couple of pages you'll see are exactly the same as 1A. So we'll just take you right to page 18. This is the only variable that moved between 1A and 1B. And that is the flood affordability side of things. Again, the flood protection program. What we're looking at here is the red line is the revenues, uh, that are currently identified for that flood protection program, roughly 30 million, anticipated to grow at about 3% a year. The green bars is the debt service on the 567 million. And so that, in essence, pays for itself. Where is, you start to see visually the need for additional revenues is in about 2031 and that's when those light blue bars kick in. So we've got a number of years to be thinking about it, but it is a substantial dollar amount. And so again, we're going to bring it to mayor and council, let you see that again as you're working through the budget process, uh, to have that at the front of the, the radar, so to speak. Uh, and so now we'll go to the last scenario, which is scenario two in here, and then certainly answer any questions. What we've done at scenario two is to layer in, um, roughly 700 million of projects different than flood, uh, tied to the general government. It's his order of magnitude really for discussion purposes. But to the councilmember's question about, uh, PPA and the schools, this scenario starts to take into account some of those types of concepts, uh, in terms of if indeed there's more school funding, that's what's in the base case. If indeed there's some other series of fundings for parks and things of that variety, that's what this scenario is starting to take into account, um, for discussion purposes. And so you see in total, it's about 2.3 billion, uh, for the tax-supported plus flood at 876 million. So in total, this scenario has about 3.1 billion of new borrowing over the next 10 years. And so as a test case, we'll show you what that looks like. Flipping page to page 20, on the debt capacity side of things. So again, these are our ratios whereby we don't want to go above these red lines for purposes of the rating agencies. And the first thing that you notice on this page, take your eye to the right-hand side, is that with all of these projects that roughly 3.1 billion factored in, we do indeed, uh, project that we'd breach that debt service policy, uh, in and about 2031. And so as we look at that, that starts to raise a red flag from a capacity, from a rating agency standpoint, to say, we need to really think hard about what decisions are made with these projects, because that is, does begin to be a red flag in terms of the triple A's, et cetera, as we think about multiple years out. Councilman.
Yes, please.
You bring up a good point, but you say you want to start looking at 2031. I mean, shouldn't we probably start looking around 26, 27 if we see it going in that direction and we don't change policy?
That's right. And I'll give to, exactly to your point, this is why, why even we're talking about this now, uh, because when the projects are authorized in your budget, usually a long lead time before the money is actually borrowed. And so by the time large capital projects, whether it's flood, whether it's schools, it takes a while to get them designed and bid and start to construct them. And so we'd like to make sure we're looking at least five to 10 years out, because you may say as a mayor and council, you know, authorize a project now, you may not have to borrow those dollars for a number of years. And so I think it's an excellent point in that the sooner you're looking at this and evaluating it, making that decision, the better, um, so that we're not sort of working in a, in a year-to-year cycle.
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, this is just a scenario, especially when you get to scenario two, right? Scenario two is if city council adds another. Scenario 2 is if city council adds another billion or so dollars on the city's debt side. So it's just a scenario, right? Just to kind of layer out, because these are based on things that we're hearing in the horizon. This is also based on an assumed growth of 3%. Growth can grow higher than that, we can get a 7% growth that council may authorize, or council may decide to lower the growth, and go negative growth or get less growth, right? And if that happens, then this whole thing changes as well, right? So this is just based on some assumptions. Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a couple more pages, mayor, council, certainly answer any questions. Page twenty-one, you start to see, again, those ratios starting to push up against that red line. So again, it starts to add caution in terms of the outlook. And I think importantly, as we flip the page to twenty-two, to the councilman's questions and others in terms of needing to have more revenue to make debt service payments, as we start to layer on this scenario, what you see is that, take the general fund as an example, there's about $60 million currently budgeted for debt service in the general fund. That would grow over the next, basically, 10 years to about $100 million, again, if all of these things were done. And so that affordability side of things, that budget sustainability side of things, we just want to show that to council as you're in the budget planning process, understanding that, to the manager's point, just a scenario for the moment to look at these variety of projects, but that affordability side and being able to demonstrate to the rating agencies that we've got the recurring annual revenue to make debt service payments is very important. Page twenty-three, similar, again, under these assumptions, we need to find as a city more dollars to make the debt service payments. You can see that visually whereby those green bars, again, are above that red line, which is the currently budgeted debt service. And then page twenty-four, lastly, in terms of flood affordability, we really talked about this in the last section, so similar theme here, really same picture. So page twenty-five, in terms of concluding observations. First observation, the top of the page, where we started with that initial scenario that really is the currently adopted CIP, amounts to about 150 million a year on average. That really is, works within the budget, it works within your policies, and so you're in good shape with respect to what we'll call the base case. As we start to move, again, to fully funding the new Jacobs numbers, that roughly 300 million, again, more revenue, different funding sources, be looking closely at that over the next several years. Third bullet point there, just again, making sure that the recurring revenues are there to make those recurring debt service payments. And with the last two bullet points, as what may be schools funding, what may be other priorities, taking a very good look at what is the repayment source, where is the revenue going to come from to take care of those projects that may be over and above what's in the current CIP right now. And so last page, in terms of next steps, and certainly happy to answer your questions, where we at least would propose to go forward with the manager and staff briefing today on December 12th, really over the balance of this calendar year, early in the first quarter, as you work through the budget, start to think about an update to the national credit rating agencies. It's been a couple of years since we've done that in great depth, and so we see that in the relatively near term, over the next couple of months. And then lastly, at the bottom, think about a bond sale in support of the CIP, really in the first quarter of the calendar year. We'll make one other point, as we look at the markets, we've also been watching the city's outstanding debt for refinancing opportunities. And so even though rates may be higher than they were during the 2020, 21 time period, we do see some opportunities to refinance existing debt for savings purposes. So as we work through this budget and CIP process, work with your staff to pull together the next series of bond issues, be looking at also appending to that refinancing for savings purposes that could save the city in the range of six, eight million dollars, depending upon where rates are at the time. So just to let council know, we're watching that very closely as we kind of work through this process. And so with that, we appreciate it. The rest of the information is appendix materials, and happy to answer any questions, mayor, council, you may have.
Any questions at this point? Chris?
Just one more. Thank you. In-depth, thorough review. Can you give us, we have projects that come before us, economic development opportunities, and we, numbers will be thrown out where this will add a million dollars into the tax base each year, or two million. But at this rate, some of these numbers, and I know it's only speculative, but can you give us an idea of, you know, as we approach some of these years, '27, '28, '29, where you see we're well above that line, what the offset would be if we, without tapping into the fund balance, what type of revenues we would need to see, what type of increase? Just as an example.
Yeah, I mean, as an order of magnitude, you could go take a look at, for instance, maybe take your eye to page twenty-two. We'll just look at the general fund on the left-hand side there. So again, if your debt service budget is right now about $60 million just in the general fund, so some different sort of buckets that way, but about $60 million. If this entire scenario were to move forward, not to say that it would, within the next five years, we'd basically need about another $10 million in revenue to pay for that. And then the out years, it starts to grow faster than that, you can kind of watch that line go from about $70 million upwards to about $100 million by the time you get out to 2024. And so if you're starting at about 60, over that whole decade, you'd have to go from about 60 to about 100 million, or a $40 million increase in revenue on the general fund side of things. New revenue, that's correct. Sir?
Okay, anybody else, Josh?
For your presentation, I'm looking in through the appendix, and I, while I see the additional potential capital priorities listed, I've not seen the additional 310 million worth of stormwater projects. Is that, were those delineated somewhere, or did you just get the total from chickens?
That's in 1B, right? And that's not necessarily new projects, it's just the increased costs of the 21 projects. Yeah, so as mentioned, Jacobs mentioned that the 567 million dollar bond referendum is now probably roughly a billion dollars, right? We're showing 876 here, because that's the delta between the grants we received and also the stormwater ERU projects that are underneath that as well in the flood protection program.
Okay. And I think it's important to note that there's some pretty high-ticket items listed, all of them, together in the capital priorities, so those are, we obviously can't do them all, so, and I think that's important.
I think really, this is just the eyes wide, no decisions points are being made, this is just based on some assumptions. I think what we're really trying to articulate to council is the decisions that are made at this table and at Deas out there, right, really determines the city's ability to afford and do some of the things that we feel like we need to do to kind of grow Virginia Beach, you know? And it's kind of eyes wide open of what that means, but things could change significantly or subtly along the way. For example, we might get an economic development opportunity that adds revenue to this, we might take growth in abundance of 3%, or we might not take growth, might go to 0% growth and things like that, and that can all have an effect on this, you know? But it's really just eyes wide open. What it's saying basically is, based on the current program CIP, we're good to go, right? We got a plan in place, and based on assumptions here, we're okay, right? If we add additional things in there, that's when we kind of need to really get a sense of what we're actually doing in terms of our priorities.
Yeah, Barbara.
Thanks, Team Davenport. I think you all are great advisor, and I appreciate this report. Just two, two quick questions. Where do you all see interest rates in 2024? GDP? Which are crystal ball for an election year?
We, David, you want to take that, in terms of crystal balls?
I was a chemistry major.
Go to the microphone, please.
But no, I appreciate that, Councilman. We really have no sense of that, other than to say that the Federal Reserve has exhibited that there is some caution in terms of them stopping the increases of ratings, rate increases. They've also given some signals that perhaps by the end of the next calendar year, we might even see some cuts. Even if we were economists, as you know, economists differ, it just depends. So we have no sense of that. The only thing I would say that we've tried to do with you, and I think one of the councilmen next to you asked this, is to build in a cushion so that all of the debt, particularly the debt in the existing CIP, that 1.5 billion, for the moment, we have about a 1% or 1.5% average cushion of interest rate differential. So at least to start with, and we're hoping to get going this coming calendar year, you know, the one coming up, and doing some borrowings, if we can be below that 5% bogey, that would then further help with subsequent issues if indeed rates went even above 5% on some follow-up issues. So again, it's a non-answer, but we're just trying to be careful and cautious, and that's really, so we don't really have an opinion, and even if we did, it's not really going to matter, it's what the real market does.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, at this point, I just want to thank you all. You know, let me just say, and it's kind of a sedway into discussion, you know, let me say, we just had some very good financial news. I think coming out of COVID, I think we're on very, very solid ground in so many ways, you know, that we really did what was necessary to weather a significant storm. And, you know, a lot of that comes with leadership and, and starting with the council comments, our manager, Patrick DeHaney, was given the Executive of the Year Award from Golden I think it's called, Golden Glove, Gov? Yeah, not Golden Glove, we're not boxing, okay? No, but I'm just saying, you know, it takes a lot to run a city. You know, we, as a council, you know, we have a remarkable staff that we work with, the management team, and everybody that works here, it takes a lot of effort to run a city, you know, the size of this magnitude, and kudos to Patrick, your entire crew, and you know, for making us the great city we are. Okay, any other council comments?
Those who are leaving as well, for maintaining our AAA bond rating is so important and if they need to do that.
Hey, anybody else for council comments at all? Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we have had, well, I'll just, I wanted to share that on Thursday, the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission is hosting their something annual human rights award. Twenty-eighth annual, thank you. I knew it was many. Dinners and award ceremonies. And in addition to, you know, recognizing the work that the members of the Human Rights Commission do, just very quietly and deliberately and thoughtfully throughout the year, they've also selected a variety of community organizations and individuals to receive their human rights award. And I know we all agree, particularly during this season, but in general, I think the most important thing we can do is to respect each other's human rights and acknowledge each other's shared humanity, and I'm just really looking forward to that program, which I believe begins at 6:00 PM on Thursday, December 14th.
Anybody else? Okay, Rosemary, and then Barbara.
The Southside Network Authority met last Friday. They're really moving along. Forty-three miles have been built out of 120, so that's sort of the way there. So I think it's going to be up and running in the next year. All good news.
Hey, Barbara?
Just a couple of things that I've talked about before I wanted to update. A few weeks ago, I told you about the Brown Cemetery that we had kind of discovered was in not a very good shape. This had been an issue when the Prince of San Meadows neighborhood was rezoned a few years ago, and they were required to fence the cemetery area, but in fencing it, there was also no maintenance, and so it's completely overgrown. And since that time, there's been a lot of staff investigation. I think Becky Kubin finally found out that it's, or decided for the attorney's office that it's okay if the sheriff's department does the work, they've gone through all of that legal, we've worked with the homeowners association, who is the actual owner of the property, and they would be tickled if we did get it better maintained. So I think things are pretty well aligned, we just now need to circle back with the sheriff and make sure he can still use his crew, and we should be able to move forward to get that cleaned up, excuse me. But I do hope that we'll come with, I think what they forgot to do, and the developer did everything he was required to do, but they just forgot to have an ongoing maintenance plan for it, and I think we can come up and do that a little better this time. Another issue, last week, you saw the presentation by Dominion Energy about the Virginia Coastal project that they're doing, but we're looking, of course, not at the offshore, but at the onshore part, and this gives me a lot of concern. Of course, they are already now working on the part that's underground, but the apartment's going to be the above-ground transmission line, is going to be a little over 10 miles through the city of Virginia Beach, and it's going to be quite an impact on that area. As you heard last week, they're going to begin the clearing of the right-of-way the last of January and first of February, and they have to have everything cut down by April 15th. So there's going to be a lot of activity in that 10 miles over the next two or three months, and I'm hoping that we can, can have a mitigation plan pretty well in place to let the people know that we will be doing something as a result of having all of this area cleared. Of course, Dominion Energy has paid the city a little over a million dollars to mitigate for the tree removal, and I think since we have the funding in place, funding is not an obstacle. So I hope that we can come up with a plan reasonably quickly, and I, last week, had the opportunity, because of the way the committees met in regard to the holidays, to brief the Green Ribbon Committee, the Open Space Committee, the Transit Air Chenaria ITA Committee, and I know the Active Transportation Committee has been staying abreast of all this, and there's a lot of interest, a lot of desire from a lot of people who've got some great background to help with this, to help develop the plan and determine just what we need to do to mitigate for this. And I certainly hope that we're not thinking we've got to do it with our own staff, because that would take about 10 years. When we have the money available, I hope we'll be looking at contracting out some of this work. So I hope that we are working, and I know our staff is aware of all this, and I would like for us to have by mid-January some element of a plan that we can talk to the people out there and say, we are going to do something to mitigate for all of this removal, and it will amount to a lot of trees coming down. I don't think they, it all has to be mitigation and tree replacement, but mitigation, and I think that's what we need to work on. I am particularly concerned about the area between Dam Neck Road and London Bridge. We had this area before us a few months ago as a part of the Amazon project, because in between the two neighborhoods of Mayberry and Prince George State, you remember, we are building a road to provide access to Amazon, or at least to have, Amazon have another access. So they're really getting it both ways. Their entire right-of-way is going to be impacted, the 150 feet for the road and 150 feet for the transmission line. So that particular little corridor in there is going to get it doubly. So, that particular little corridor in there is going to get it doubly. And when we had the other $18 million that Dominion Energy paid the city, most of it was allocated for road projects specifically, but I think there was a smaller project that was set aside for transportation safety all over the city. So, I hope we will particularly look at this area. I know that those neighborhoods are very much concerned about what's going to happen at London Bridge Road when that road comes through, so this gives us some funding to look at that issue as well. But that particular section of the right-of-way is going to really be impacted, like I say, for the full right-of-way, both with the road and with the transmission line. Of course, the rest of it will be the transmission line, and as I said, they're going to have to do all of the clearing before April 15th, and then they'll be coming back west to east and then east to west to put in the transmission lines along the way. So, over the next two years, there's going to be a lot of impact, and I hope we'll be working to let these people know that, yes, it is a Dominion Energy project, but they're still our citizens, and it's still our city, and it's still our neighborhoods, and I think we still have responsibility to make sure it's handled well and we get to do the mitigation. The money is already in the bank, I understand, for a little over $1 million, so we don't need to wait five years to, I want to see a plan, and I'm hoping that we're going to get that developed fairly quickly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jennifer?
I want to say something else.
Okay, okay. If you're okay, Rosemary had something that's there.
I just wanted to thank Barbara for bringing up Prince George Estates and Mayberry, because I've been, we've been having meetings with the Amazon people, and the Amazon people have been really, really good about responding to the issues, but it's still a big, big project, and it's been very difficult for them. I mean, when there was no rain, there was constant dust. The dust was going everywhere. It was being sucked into their HVAC systems and going on into their houses and all over. Backs of their houses being covered in dirt. And now that it's rained, then they've got flooding going on back there, and then there's the trucks that get started at 5:45 in the morning with backing up, going beep, 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 waking everybody up. And then there's, it's just been really tough for these people to deal with. And you can imagine something of this hugeness going on, and then they've got Dominion Energy coming down with these, so they're getting, like Barbara said, they're getting a double whammy going there. And they have been asking for a stoplight. I've talked to the manager about this, and it wasn't just because of the Amazon project, but this has piled on to the problem. There's a curve that comes right before you get there, trying to exit their neighborhood. Cars are coming around that curve really fast, and they can't see the traffic coming. And then with the extra traffic that's going to come in with the Amazon, that is the one thing that they have been asking for. And if you look at the sacrifice these two neighborhoods are having to make, they want a stoplight. I don't think, especially with the economic value that these projects have brought to the city and what they're having to deal with, I don't think a stoplight is a whole lot of things for them to ask. So, I would really like to lead with the council and the manager to see if we can provide, and it wasn't just because of Amazon, it was already a problem. But, oh, the other thing I was talking about, the generators. The generators are going really loud at all hours, keeping people awake, and the lighting, it's just been, I get the emails too.
We wait until the end of January when they start cutting down those trees.
One thing after another. So, if we could please give these people a stoplight.
That would be a good idea. Hey, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. First, I wanted to share, yesterday, I took the majority of the morning and rode along as an observer with the Ocean Park Volunteer Rescue Squad, and I see our EMS chief, Jason Schaudt, in the gallery there. I was, I accompanied Advanced EMT Dylan Koch and paramedic Jack Shepherd, and we didn't get a single call for service at all. So, I had a lot of, a lot of time to chat with them and learn more about.
You should have been hanging around with them more.
Well, we started driving around looking for somebody who just like happened to be hurt, to be honest with you. But, but it was, it was a great, a great opportunity to learn more about what they do, and I just can't say enough about our volunteers, our career folks, and how well they integrate together and with fire as well. So, it's just, it is a big kind of complicated system, and we're unique in so many ways, and it's, it takes a couple of times to really kind of wrap your mind and your arms around it, but I really did enjoy that experience, and I look forward to going back again. I wanted to throw a huge shout-out and thank you to Senators Warner and Kane. We just found out yesterday that as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law, we were, Virginia Beach was awarded $14.9 million for the Virginia Beach Trail. So, I think that is incredibly significant, and it is, it is just, it's just, it's great to have supporters like that in our government, at the federal level, who value connectivity and pedestrian safety, bikeability, and see that corridor for the opportunity that it is. And speaking of transportation corridors, I see Mr. Kemp in the audience, and I just wanted to say thank you for leading a group of active transportation committee members to tour a very long row of things in and around the Bayside and along our Bayfront, reaching, I think you probably got even almost to the oceanfront, and then all the way to the Agriculture Research Extension Center. So, I'm surprised you're not still out there right now with the amount of stuff that you took a look at. But I was able to meet at Bayside Rec Center and just say thank you, and I'd like to thank you again, sir, for, you know, drawing attention and awareness to connectivity along our Bayfront.
Thank you. Not the good news stuff today? Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. A few weeks ago, U.S. News came out with best elementary schools, middle school rankings, and several of our district schools were included, but I want to give a special shout-out to Kingston Elementary School. District Eight was the number-one school in the state, number-two Old Donation School. And then we also had Old Donation for Middle Schools, as well as Lynn Haven Middle School made the list, Cox High School. So, just a big shout-out to those administrators, those teachers, and of course, the parents and the teachers, students that make up those schools. So, very exciting.
Great stuff. Good idea. Michael?
Well, one thing I wanted to share that I failed to mention previously was that we had a very special celebration last night for one of our colleagues. Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond was recognized by Inside Business for her achievement in business, along with 24 other women who are excelling in the business world and contributing not only in the, in the business community in Hampton Roads, but also more broadly, their impact is being felt more broadly across the community. Of those 25, many of our friends and colleagues and other public servants were recognized, but particularly want to draw attention to the fact that Dr. Ross Hammond, our friend and colleague, was honored among that group and really celebrate her recognition.
Hey, anybody else at this point? Okay, thank you, and I think we're ready for agenda review.
Mayor?
I do have.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sabrina.
No, you're fine. Just a couple of comments really quick. One is, I wanted to just highlight that December 20th, Wednesday, we'll be having a neighborhood community meeting as it relates to the Hampton Roads Recovery Center, and that will be located at Brandon Middle School from 6:30 to 8 o'clock PM. And our marketing department was nice enough, even though I requested it this morning, to provide flyers for that particular event, they already had them in my packet available for me, as I said. So, thank you so much. That was very nice of you to expedite that request. The other comment that I would like to make, on a sadder note, it came to my attention that the vice president of the CTEC Civic League, Elizabeth Mills, passed away. And I remember her, just her, you know, very kind person, very strong leader for the CTEC League, Civic League, and the community, and I was just really looking at all that she'd done and accomplished, and she'll sorely be missed, certainly her family. Send our thoughts and prayers, and send my deepest sincere condolences, because she's a fine, she was a fine woman. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Hey, Amelia?
Just mentioning, a lot of the community know her as Gigi, so if you use that, Gigi don't know exactly who you're talking about. Thanks for saying that tonight.
I think we do. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay. Agenda review?
I don't think we have any speakers. So, um, there was our class, I think. Under ordinance and regulations, we have 24 or 18. Or abstaining?
So, I was late and wasn't sure during the, there was a discussion about the language in the ordinance for the festival, Exhibit A, summary of sponsorship, whether or not we could confirm that the language in the sponsorship will read something more like, instead of pop rock music format, but that it would also include hip-hop and R&B as a genre to include in this festival. It was discussed, I apologize.
Yeah, we did. It was, it was, we stepped on your message and highlighted it in a slide.
Right, we had a big presentation.
Okay, Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, we can make this change as well, the more clarified, that some words matter, you know, and we can make this change as well to the ordinance if council permitted.
That is a substitute. Thank you.
Okay, great. Good point.
Do it as amended?
Yes.
Yeah. Maddie, you got it, haven't you?
Yes, I have it.
Anything else?
Okay, I will be abstaining from where Bailey got, from K1. I have a letter that's been prepared, will be on file. I'll be abstaining because of my business dealings with Atlantic Union Bank, and so just want to make sure everyone knew that, and that letter will be on file. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All you're saying on the Dominion Energy project. Okay. Summary of sponsorship. We already have it written up, the alternative?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you guys are fast.
You guys are.
Really fast. I mean, you can Xerox it that quick. Okay, under planning, District Six, Ruffin. Is there some changes? Did you want that deferred?
Yes. January 2nd.
Number two, Bonnie Brightsand, Assembly?
That issue, I think, is fine. I believe what we have is a typo in the letter where it says the applicant recently purchased 3.90 acres and seeks to incorporate that into existing mining. I think that's the total acreage, three, that the, this whole area is not just something he just purchased, or did he just purchase the whole 13.9 acres? I think it's 13.9 acres total. It's 13.9 acres is the site size.
13.9 acres is what he purchased.
So, so this should be 13.9 acres, not 3.90 and below. Okay, just wanted to make sure I wasn't looking at two different parcels. Okay, thank you. That's, that's good for consent.
Number three, Amber Lee Carter, District Eight.
Fine.
Anything else? Number four, Mike Seifert, District Two.
That's consent. They've worked on this for years. It complies with the transitionary requirements and, I mean, all consent, I've heard no opposition.
Vice Mayor, I have to, I will abstain from that. Professional relationship with Mr. Seifert.
Number five, Anna Castilla, Laura, District Three.
Oh, that would be fine.
Number six, the ordinance to amend Section 804 of the city zoning ordinance. Everybody okay with that? And number seven, the ordinance to amend Section 237 and 901 of the city zoning ordinance. Is everybody okay with that?
I've done a vote no. I just am not comfortable with that yet.
Head me to that list as well, if I can.
Is this seven?
Yes.
I had a question about that. I don't know what the appropriate form to ask it might be.
Ask it now?
Yeah, there were a couple points in the language that I had a question about considering the, where this use district is, the fencing requirement would be one of them. Well, I think it might be appropriate for some of this area, but maybe not others. And then the first store, first story, ground floor storage, if, for example, were shielded in the back of the development or the, or whatever building is being constructed.
Yes, good afternoon. So, if it is permitted on the ground floor, it has to be internal to the building where you cannot see it from the exterior.
Okay. And then what about the fencing?
The fencing has been removed because we realized that that was an error in, that's, that's typical to regular self-storage, where they're the one story on their own. This is going to look like an office building, so we didn't want to require the fencing.
Okay, so, so the proposed amendment will not read as it is in the, or the amendment itself won't read as it is in the agenda package?
It was to be removed.
It is still there. 237B.
Okay, so that is, that was supposed to be removed. We're going to have to look at that.
Want to do it as amended?
Can we do it as amended?
I would be fine with that. But, yeah, it just didn't look right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I wanted to note, I'm going to vote no on number seven.
So, that was number seven that you were just talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property; discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or for the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining
The part that you're, you're reading, Mr. Shulman, is about fencing everywhere else in the city.
Okay.
And so that would be required anywhere else in the city. It's the original part of the ordinance that's in effect today. The part that we're changing is C, only in the B for C.
Okay.
And that's where they wouldn't have to do the fencing, so I think it, it's actually written correctly.
Okay, all right. I just want to mention, thank you very much.
We are doing, we are doing K1 as amended.
Yes.
Okay, any, anything else? Did I miss anything else?
Okay, moving on. The chair will entertain a motion, recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property; discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or for the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A 3, District Two, District Four, District Nine; public contract; discussion of the reward of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion for terms of or scope of such contract where the discretion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A 29, and that is Project Football, Canopy Project, Air Rail Commerce Park, and Veterans Administration Project; and personnel matters; discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A 1, and that's council appointments, boards, commissions, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay.
Councilor Malucci?
Aye.
Councilor Henry? Councilor Remick?
Aye.
Councilor O'Hammond?
Aye.
Senator Ross?
Aye.
Senator Shulman?
Aye.
Senator Taylor? That's out, Councilor Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye. Okay, we are recessed into a closed session.